Good evening. If everyone could take their seats, we'll get started momentarily. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we went number five first.
Is everyone on? Everyone can hear me? Thank you. Good evening. My name is Phil Griffiths. I'm the Under-Secretary for the Environment with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. I'd like to welcome you all here this evening to our public hearing to hear about the proposed Upper Hoosatonic River area of critical environmental concern. Thank you to the folks here at the school for allowing us to use the auditorium this evening. There's a lot of people here with a lot of interest in this project, so we'll try to get to business as quickly as we can and have an opportunity to hear everyone on all the issues related to this A C E C proposal. And I look forward to hearing from everyone on all sides of the issue this evening. The purpose this evening is for us to receive testimony regarding the nomination and to solicit both oral and written testimony. We're looking for information about the quality and significance of the environmental resources that are part of the proposal, the appropriateness of this A C E C designation, and information about the appropriateness of the boundary as proposed in the nomination and the additional boundary proposal documents. The purpose here this evening is to get oral testimony. Folks may also submit additional written testimony to Secretary Bowles, Secretary Ian Bowles of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, for a further 10 days following this evening's public hearing. So if you hear things this evening, you can add that and provide it in written testimony for the next 10 days. So written testimony needs to be received by February 9, 2009. After receiving all of the testimony and review by our staff at the DCR of all of the information, the secretary will announce his decision within 60 days of this hearing by March 30, 2009. So we will listen to the public comment. There will be a further environmental evaluation by staff at our office, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, with assistance by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. We'll look at the information that's provided by the nominators, the comments this evening, evaluation by our staff, and the regulations as provided in the A C E C regulations. There have been a series of four public meetings held before this evening, one each in each of the towns that are affected by the designation. That is a place where we provided most of information and answered a lot of questions regarding the nomination, the effects of A C E C designation and the program itself. Purpose this evening is not for us to get into specific debate and answer specific questions. It's your chance to provide comment to us so that we may take it into consideration this evening. This hearing will be tape-recorded, just so everyone knows. Our technical guy, are we all set with the tape recording? Thank you. There's a sign-up list in the rear of the building. We've brought that down here. If anybody has not signed up and wishes to speak, please do so at the back of the room. There's a list, and we'll add people as we go along. The way we'll run this evening, after I finish the introduction, Liz Sorenson from the DCR program will read some official documents into the record as we are required to do by regulation, and then we'll begin with a presentation by the nominators. Eleanor Tillinghast, on behalf of the nominators, will do a presentation about the proposed A C E C with some additional information from Leslie Lucchanik about the boundaries as they are presented. I expect that'll take somewhere from around 10 or 15 minutes, and then we will ask any elected officials who are here if they would like to provide comment. I don't know if anyone is. We'll ask, I'm sorry, I can't see everybody from down here, if there are any elected officials, and at that point, we will then turn to the sign-in list and ask people to speak in the order which we have them off the sheets. There's a lot of people here with a lot of interest this evening, so we will allow the nominators about a 10-minute period to start their presentation, and we will ask everyone to keep their comments to no more than three minutes. Tell us exactly the most critical part of what you wish, let us go, and limit your time to three minutes, please. There are, again, we will accept written comment. If we don't get to everybody this evening, we will stay as late as we can, get as much as we can, because we want to hear it, but we can get written testimony up to 10 days further on. On that note, I think we ought to get started and jump right in. Again, thank you to the folks here at the high school for having us out here. I'm glad we're able to make it out, and I'm glad to see so many people come out this evening to provide comment. I look forward to hearing all there is to hear. On that note, I'm going to turn it over to Liz Sorenson, who will read some official documents into the record.
Good evening. I'm going to read parts of the public notice into the public record. The entire public notice is part of the public record, but I'd like to abbreviate the length of the reading and save wear on my voice as well. The secretary accepted the A C E C nomination for full review, public review, on September 29, 2008, after it was submitted on September 2, 2008, by 43 citizens, including State Senator Ben Downing, State Representatives Dennis Geyer, Smitty Pignatelli, and Christopher Sparanzo pursuant to 301 CMR 1205. The Berkshire County League of Sportsmen, Berkshire Natural Resources Council, Green Berkshires, and Massachusetts Audubon Society comprise the nominating steering committee. The public hearing was originally scheduled for December 11, 2008, but was canceled due to hazardous winter weather. As you heard this public hearing, we're here to hear your testimony. Written or oral testimony will be accepted regarding the resources of the nominated area, the proposed boundary, and the appropriateness of such a designation. Additional written comments may be submitted to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Ian A. Bowles, within 10 days of the public hearing by February 9, 2009, and you have an address for mailed comments or an email address on your agenda. If you didn't get an agenda, please see us afterwards. Four public meetings were held in October 2008, one in each of the four communities in the nominated area. Copies of the nomination and maps showing the proposed boundary have been distributed to local officials in the four communities and are available to view at city and town halls, public libraries, and offices of Berkshire Regional Planning Commission in Pittsfield, Mass Audubon's Pleasant Valley Wildlife Sanctuary in Lenox, Berkshire Natural Resources Council in Pittsfield, and Green Berkshires in Great Barrington. A review copy is also available at the offices of the DCR Bureau of Planning and Resource Protection, 251 Causeway Street in Boston. There are also websites, and these are on your agenda. This public notice was published and distributed as follows. A copy of the public notice was emailed to the Boards of Selectmen, Planning Boards, and Conservation Commissions of the four municipalities located within the nominated area. Approximately 350 copies of the public notice were emailed to state legislators, state and regional agencies, environmental organizations, citizens, and other interested parties. A copy of the public notice was published in the December 24, 2008 issue of the Environmental Monitor, published by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Copies of the public notice were published in three local papers, in the Berkshire Eagle on December 22, and in The Advocate and The Pittsfield Gazette on December 25, 2008. Information regarding the public hearing was also posted on the Department of Conservation and Recreation's website, the Areas of Critical Environmental Concern Program website, and the nominators' website.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to begin the presentation on behalf of the principal nominators of the A C E C. Eleanor Tillinghast will give us an outline of the proposal.
Can you all hear me? Okay, good. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight, and thanks to the undersecretary for being here, and Liz Sorenson, and our many supporters, and we look forward to hearing all opinions about the A C E C tonight. I am Eleanor Tillinghast. I represent Green Berkshires, and tonight, I'm also representing the coalition called Save the Hoosatonic. And as was mentioned before, there are four groups. The fifth group has just joined us as well, Ducks Unlimited. In addition, we have the support of a number of organizations, such as the Nature Conservancy. She didn't mention Congressman Olver. He also is a supporter. We have a website right now with a petition up on it, over 400 signatures collected in the last two days, and about 300 signatures on paper as well. So we have a lot of supporters. A lot of people have worked hard to put this nomination together, and I look forward to giving you a brief description of the resources that make it appropriate for designation as an area of critical environmental concern. And James is helping me because I knew I wouldn't be able to talk and figure out the computer at the same time, so he's doing that right now. I'll give you a little background while he is working on that. The nomination covers 12,280 acres in four communities, Pittsfield, Washington, Lee, and Lenox. And as you'll see on the map, it has the river running right through the center of it, and it goes up into the uplands, October Mountain State Forest, and to the east, over to about East Street, which is actually where this school is on the other side of the road. There are five properties that are already protected within the A C E C. We have an 818-acre George Eldery Wildlife Management Area. There is the Canoe Meadows, which is owned and managed by the Mass Audubon Society. We have part of the October Mountain State Forest. As you probably know, the October Mountain State Forest is the largest one in the state, 16,500 acres. Thank you. And we have about 5,500 acres within the A C E C. And then Lenox has the post farm, a little over 200 acres. So there's a lot of public land, over 55% of the land covered in the A C E C nomination is public and open to recreation. Now, this, and I realize you are going to have a hard time seeing that, but that gives you a general sense of the boundaries. Here is Lee, sorry, here is Lee down here, Washington up here. These are the uplands, steep slopes coming down here, Pittsfield up here, and Lenox over here. Now, many people think of this A C E C nomination as being solely the river. In fact, there's a lot of upland as well. This is up on top of October Mountain. And what I'm going to do is give you a little tour that runs up the eastern side of the nominated area and then comes down the river and ends in Woods Pond. And this is going to be very quick because we don't have a lot of time tonight. There's so many people here, we want to make sure you all have a chance to talk. This is the Washington Meadow. It's on top of the October Mountain State Forest, and we have some rare species here. American Bittern is one of the ones, a bird that's been seen here. This is Felton Pond, also known as Felton Brook. A wetland along the Whitney Road. This is Farnham Dam, and I'm moving northward now, and now we're going to start coming down. This is Mill Brook, an old structure. I thought it was really beautiful. It gives you a sense of the history that's also in the area. There's a lot of old industrial activity throughout this A C E C nominated area. You can see the old stonework there. This is Mill Brook. We have within the A C E C 21.5 miles of cold-water fisheries, cold-water streams. That means that they support reproducing populations of native brook trout. If any of you are fishermen, you know that native brook trout are a threatened and highly vulnerable fish population. Now, if you were to follow the road down past the stream that we just looked at, you would come down onto, this is New Lenox Road here, and you'd be coming up here and coming down. This is an aerial photo taken by Jonas Doby Dennis, and it shows you the boat launch right here, the John Decker Boat Launch. This land is within the George Eldery Wildlife Management Area. There's here agricultural land, one of the conditions of an A C E C. This is looking southward down the river, and just to orient you, again, here is the boat launch. And you can see that this is a very natural-flowing river, very serpentine. If any of you have canoed or kayaked along here, you know that it takes forever to travel just a mile. You know, you just keep going, and you never get anywhere. There's the boat launch. Now, we're going to come down out of the mountains, out of the sky, and get onto the water, and I want to show you a little of what it looks like. There are the mountains. We're looking now toward the October Mountain State Forest. That's Dewey Hill to right here, and then this is October Mountain. There are 31 rare species, state-listed species within the area, 30 species of fish known or suspected in the waters of the Hoosatonic River and the streams. There are eight named tributary cold-water streams and a number of other ones as well. This is Cardinal Flower, also an uncommon flower. This is the Mustard White, a rare species. This photograph is by Renee Laubach, who is, as you probably all know, at the Mass Audubon. A narrow-leaved Spring Beauty, this photograph was taken by Tony Gola. I think it's really beautiful. And somebody who's really enjoying the water. He's looking actually at the fish spawning. This was taken on May 26, and the fish were jumping all over the place. This is Kurt Mailand, who's from Trout Unlimited. Now, we're back to looking southward along the river. This is a very important wetland right here. It's at the base of Yocan Brook. This is the railroad going along. Here's October Mountain. We're looking southward, and Woods Pond is down here. A closer look at Woods Pond, and here is, this is actually right here, a post farm owned by the town of Lenox, and this is the railroad station, which is an historic structure. Lane Construction is down here. Another angle of Woods Pond, again, this is a photograph from Jonas, sorry, Jonas Doby Dennis. And now what I'm going to do is take you into the pond and show you a photograph of the mountains going this way. A lot of people love paddling in this pond, and I've been told by friends of mine who are fishermen that this is one of the best places to fish, particularly in wintertime. I guess ice fishing is very popular, and I'm hoping that Jay Bever will talk about that a little bit later. He's got photographs showing 50 people out there fishing. It seems amazing the ice can hold everybody, but it works. And that's another photograph. I've spent a lot of time photographing that area because I think it's so beautiful, and that's the end of my presentation. We have a lot of materials on our website, savethehoosatonic.org. There are also some materials outside. We brought a six-page on three pieces of paper summary of our nomination. You can also download the entire nomination. It's on the website, 180 pages. So thanks very much, and now we're going to have Leslie Lucchanik, who's one of our consultants, talk a little bit about how we establish the boundaries. Later, you will hear from another one of our consultants, Bryony Angus, who's at Ty &amp; Bond, and she'll be talking about some other aspects of our nomination as well.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Lucchanik. I've been working with the nominators, helping them to prepare the nomination for the past several months, provided whatever experience and expertise I was able to. I was director of the A C E C program for 15 years, from 1989 to 2004. My job tonight is to try to describe to you the approach and the process for proposing, preparing the proposed A C E C nomination boundary. I'm going to be reading so I can... Old age is a... You fill in the blank. I'm going to be reading from a text, so I won't wander too much, and I can stay as concise and on point as I possibly can. So my presentation will consist of an overview and explanation of the proposed boundary for the nomination itself. It includes 10 slides and as a brief summary, the process of developing the proposed boundary. We start with the photo that shows a view of the northern stretch of the Upper Hoosatonic River in Pittsfield facing south. Here is the boundary that has been prepared. You've seen this slide before from Eleanor. The A C E C program requires the proposed boundary be delineated on a USGS topographic map. This map is the outcome of identifying and mapping several resource overlays that help to determine the proposed A C E C boundary. Stepping back from the maps, we start with the river corridor and its adjacent uplands. Here we see an aerial view of Upper Hoosatonic Corridor and the unique juxtaposition of the west slopes of October Mountain State Forest. The close ecological relationships between the uplands to the river, its adjacent wetlands and floodplains are readily apparent. Another aerial photo showing the same ecological relationships, we see very literally that the character and ecological health of the river cannot be separated from the adjacent uplands and tributary streams. Now to the process of developing the proposed boundary using resource map overlays. This is a schematic diagram showing the proposed boundary in yellow, superimposed on the system of tributary streams that flow into the Upper Hoosatonic. The confluence of the east and west branches is shown at the top in South Pittsfield, and then the boundary includes approximately 12.9 miles of the Upper Hoosatonic running southerly to North Lee. Identifying and mapping these subwatersheds that drain into the Upper Hoosatonic is the first step in understanding and delineating these critical ecological relationships and the proposed A C E C boundary. This map shows key water and wetland resources and the sub watershed boundaries that drain this critical stretch into the river. We're able to map those sub-drainage basins of those tributary streams. So the proposed A C E C follows these subwatersheds to the greatest extent possible to capture the dynamics of the ecological system. This map also shows floodplains located along the river and along some tributary streams. The process of developing proposed boundary then continues with identifying additional layers of natural resources and features. Again, with a theme of water, water resources, this slide shows one of those beautiful tributary streams flowing into the Hoosatonic from October Mountain State Forest. As mentioned, the water resources of the nomination are a starting point. For the Upper Hoosatonic, identifying the location, concentration, and significance of rare species and other is another essential step in the process of delineating the proposed boundary. This map shows habitat and wildlife resources. The proposed A C E C contains at least 31 state-listed rare species. Almost 2/3 of the area is delineated by the State Natural Heritage Program, is core rare species habitat or supporting natural landscape. And as shown on the map, again, it's very difficult for you to see it from the audience, several cold-water fishery streams flow into this stretch of the Hoosatonic. In conjunction with the water resources of the area, these extraordinary habitat resources alone support and justify A C E C designation, in my opinion. Yet more information is presented in the nomination document in addition to the documentation of additional layers of important resources. Back to the proposed boundary map, there are seven different maps included in the nomination document that were used to guide the delineation of the proposed boundary, plus a wealth of scientific and narrative information. These resources and features include protected open space, steep slopes, forests and farmlands, historic and archaeological resources. The nominated area includes all nine of the potential resource features listed in the A C E C regulations. The proposed boundary, again, shown here, is the final result of that process of gathering and evaluating the location, ecological relationships, significance, uniqueness of the resources, and the features of the Upper Hoosatonic. We return to the river and conclude with another photo of the Upper Hoosatonic. We started with the view of the river facing south from Pittsfield. This photo shows the river at the southern edge of the proposed boundary, facing north from Golden Hill Bridge in North Lee. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor and Leslie, for giving us some of the basic information. At this point, I'd like to invite a comment from elected officials or representatives maybe here, and I'm wondering if there's, if anyone is here from Congressman Olver's office. I know he was one of the nominators. If not, if there are any of our state-elected officials or anyone from their office here who would like to provide commentary? No? Okay. Sorry? That was easy. All right, in that case, we have a list that looks from the sign-up sheets that I've got here. We've got about 35 people who have indicated they would like a chance to speak, so that's quite a few people to get through. I would really ask that people do try and limit their comments to three minutes and no longer, so that we can get through this in a reasonable amount of time. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name as we ask them to speak here, and after we do ask you to speak, if you could please just give your name and what community you live in, just so that we know who's speaking, we can identify, folks, and if you're here representing an organization, let us know. Again, please, we look forward to hearing from everybody on the topic, and we will... Yes, what we'll ask, actually, we have a microphone on either side here. If you could come down, use the microphone to make sure that everyone can hear you, and we will get started. The first person on the list here is Gail Yo.
Hi, I'm Gail Yo, and I'm the Western Mass Regional Director for Mass Audubon. And Mass Audubon is a statewide environmental organization which owns and manages over 36,000 acres of land and has a system of 48 wildlife sanctuaries open to the public. Throughout our summer day and overnight camp programs, we reach over 7,000 children each year, helping to inspire the next generation of environmental stewards. Our organization's stated mission is to protect the nature of Massachusetts for people and wildlife. As I am sure you're aware, Mass Audubon's Canoe Meadows Wildlife Sanctuary sits within the A C E C boundary on the northern end within the city of Pittsfield, and Mass Audubon has been a member of Save the Hoosatonic Coalition from its inception. Laura Johnson, who's the president of Mass Audubon, along with Renee Laubach, Berkshire Sanctuary Director, has signed on to the A C E C nomination. Tonight, I would like to take a couple of minutes to focus my comments on the stewardship component of A C E C designation. The long-term stewardship of this important resource area and the community conversation that will be necessary for its protection into the future is one of the compelling reasons for Mass Audubon's involvement in being a nominating partner in this A C E C. Highlighting the important resource areas through the nomination and designation is only the first step. From this point going forward, there is now the opportunity to work in conjunction with the A C E C program throughout all the affected communities to create an A C E C stewardship committee. We are eager to participate in this committee side by side with other public and private landowners within the A C E C boundaries, including the Department of Fish and Game and the Department of Conservation and Recreation. The communities that fall within the boundary of the A C E C and the many different river advocates will play a vital role in making the long-term stewardship of this river a priority through their work on this committee. We look forward to begin working together with people of diverse interests to create strategies and undertake collaborative actions to help protect, manage, and restore the exemplary natural and cultural resources of the Upper Hoosatonic River. In the interest of time, I have attached a draft proposal for the stewardship committee, which outlines some of the key activities that could be tackled by such a dedicated group. A very brief list to give you a flavor of what could be accomplished includes the following. An A C E C stewardship committee for the Upper Hoosatonic A C E C could serve as a forum for continued community education around the very complex issues facing this river and the future remediation that will be undertaken with regard to the PCBs. Identify priorities for land protection within the A C E C to ensure that key resources are protected. Identify shared management objectives. Seek opportunities for joint educational and interpretive programs focused on the key environmental resources of the A C E C. Identify opportunities to improve protection for the resources of the A C E C. Foster access to, use, and enjoyment of the resource for Hoosatonic. And identify... And identify and seek funding for public education, research, land protection and management, river and wetland restoration, and general conservation opportunities throughout the A C E C. Thank you for your time and attention to this very special place in need of the heightened protection and collaboration that an A C E C stewardship committee's ongoing dialogue can provide.
Thank you, Gail. Next on our list is Renee Laubach.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Undersecretary. Thanks for this opportunity to comment tonight. I am Renee Laubach, Director of Mass Audubon's Berkshire Wildlife Sanctuaries. And as you've heard, Mass Audubon owns and operates the Canoe Meadows Wildlife Sanctuary in Pittsfield, a 262 acre property contained within the proposed A C E C boundaries. Our sanctuary is visited by tens of thousands of people annually, and our school outreach program introduces thousands of children to the Hoosatonic and its watershed. I have the good fortune of working in the environmental field and living in the Berkshires for the last 24 years. During those years, I've spent a considerable amount of time on the river and within the A C E C as proposed, including numerous canoe trips on the Hoosatonic. I can say without a doubt that the area proposed for designation is one of the most wildlife-rich areas anywhere in western Massachusetts. Please allow me to outline briefly the biological resources of the proposed Upper Hoosatonic A C E C. The proposed A C E C is a complex and rich ecosystem that includes the river itself, adjacent wetlands and floodplains, eight high-quality tributary streams, abundant wildlife, concentrations of rare species, and the steep forested western slopes of October Mountain State Forest. The habitat resources of the area are extraordinary according to the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. For instance, as you've heard already, there encompasses 31 state listed rare species, including seven endangered, 13 threatened, and 11 species of special concern. Some of the included species are American Bittern, Bald Eagle, Common Mohan, Wood Turtle, the Mustard White Butterfly, and the Jefferson Salamander. And of course, there are many more. This Hoosatonic Valley is underlaid by marble bedrock, which is a major reason for the high diversity and density of rare species. 28% of the proposed area is priority and estimated rare species habitat. 37% is biomap core habitat with an additional 27% supporting natural habitat, making for 64% total. 55 acres are designated as living waters core habitat, and 29% are critical supporting watershed lands. And there are also two exemplary natural communities that are rare in the state, the acidic Graminoid fen and the level bog. And it also includes some of the finest riparian habitat remaining in central Berkshire County. There are also many vernal pools. Two have been certified and there are 44 potential vernal pools. It also includes the Upper Hoosatonic Valley Important Bird Area that was designated by Mass Audubon, an area covering 1,300 acres. This important bird habitat is a migratory corridor that hosts 200, excuse me, 200-plus species. There are such rare and declining species, in addition to the ones I've mentioned already, that are rare in extensive freshwater marshlands such as the Sora rail and the Virginia rail and King rail, for instance. The river and adjacent backwaters are both a breeding area and a major migratory waterfall area. Henry Woolsey, the Program Director for Natural Heritage, in a letter to us said, "In summary, this area contains an impressive diversity of species and natural communities of conservation concern." And therefore, we urge you to designate the Upper Hoosatonic River and portions of its watershed as an A C E C." Thank you very much.
Next on the list is Donald Mason.
My name is Donald Mason. I'm the District Manager for the Lane Construction Corporation. And I'd like to read a letter that we are going to submit.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. My name is Donald Mason. I work with the Lane Construction Corporation. I'm the District Manager. And I'd like to put a letter into the record this evening, and I would like to read the letter to the audience. The Lane Construction Corporation's Lenoxdale Plant is an industrial facility located inside the proposed Upper Hoosatonic River A C E C boundary in Lee. Lane has been mining and processing sand and gravel and producing hot mixed asphalt for nearly 40 years in Lenoxdale. Additionally, the property was operated with similar uses by the previous owner. As part of our operation, we withdraw water from the Hoosatonic River in accordance with a water withdrawal permit issued by the Massachusetts Department Environmental Protection Agency. We are concerned an A C E C designation could jeopardize the future renewal of our water withdrawal permit. In addition, an A C E C designation could affect the zoning status of this and adjoining sites as industrial. With limited industrial property available in the surrounding area, it is important to the future economic health of the region to maintain the current allowable uses. The aggregate and hot mixed products we produce at this site are essential to operating and maintaining the roads and bridges in Berkshire County. Our operations provide needed jobs for local residences and businesses that depend upon the services and products we provide. As this land is reclaimed in the future, other industrial uses that can be housed on this property will continue to provide a basis for a healthy economy. We oppose inclusion of this section of the river that borders Crystal Street in the proposed Upper Hoosatonic River A C E C boundary, which includes any property owned by the Lane Construction Corporation. While we are a strong supporter of environmental stewardship, the A C E C designation would inhibit valuable uses of this property now and in the future without environmental benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Next is Tad Ames, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Undersecretary. My name is Tad Ames. I'm the President of Berkshire Natural Resources Council. I am representing the organization tonight and also myself as a nominator of the A C E C. The Berkshire Natural Resources Council was intricately involved in the assemblage of the Wildlife Management Area now named for George Eldery. This work was carried out by George Zlacki throughout the 1970s and 80s. And in addition to that work, we are also the owner of 65 acres on East Street, which is within the boundaries of the area of critical environmental concern that has been nominated. The Resources Council is pleased to be a sponsor of the nomination, and we are also pleased to give you, Secretary Bowles, and the community the firm commitment to be active and constructive participants on a stewardship committee, anticipating that that would be formed if the area is designated. I would like to speak tonight briefly on three subjects. The purposes of the nomination, and on that score, I'll speak on behalf of Save the Hoosatonic, but also, of course, touch on the eligibility of the area for nomination and designation, and the eligibility for designation under the regulations set out by the A C E C statute. The purpose of the A C E C is threefold. First, to raise public awareness of this area's exceptional natural resources. Second, to establish a more formal and active role for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the effort to encourage the most sophisticated standards and methodology for removal and disposal of contamination in the river and its floodplain. And finally, to establish a framework for long-term public participation in the stewardship of the area. We believe that the nomination itself has already begun the work of achieving heightened public awareness, and we are more strongly convinced than ever that A C E C designation will be a positive and non-disruptive force for the goals of ensuring a better cleanup and restoration and ensuring better long-term stewardship of this wonderful area. So why is this area so wonderful? Why is it eligible for a nomination and designation? As noted already, the abundance of outstanding features defines this area. The river and its streams comprise a four-season fishery. Wetlands ranging from the Yocan Brook Marsh to the Wet Meadow on October Mountain provide ecological services and productive wildlife habitat. Those same services are provided by the river's floodplains and the steep erosion-prone western slopes of October Mountain State Forest. Keeping those in forest helps protect public water quality, public health. Farming retains a small but significant hold in this richly historic part of Berkshire County, and the beautiful and diverse scenery provides a stunning backdrop for everyone from canoe meadows bird watchers to backwater paddlers to hikers climbing the gorge trail to Felton Lake. And while we welcome with measured trepidation the pending cleanup of the PCB contamination in the river and its floodplain, that contamination does threaten the health of humans and wildlife alike, we also recognize that the cleanup itself poses a threat of its own to the great resources of this area. By nominating the A C E C, we seek to ensure that the best possible practice is for those efforts, not only for the benefit of the resources themselves, but because a healthy and restored valley will bring expanded economic benefits to the greater community in the form of tourism, recreation, public health and well-being, and quality of life. Now, few initiatives in the Berkshires ever enjoy 100% unanimity of support, but the Upper Hoosatonic River A C E C nomination has received broad public endorsement by a large majority of all who have raised a voice. Governmental agencies, ranging from the Massachusetts Division Fisheries and Wildlife and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, have made deep investments in this area. Over half the area, as been noted, is publicly owned for conservation purposes. The United States Congress has included this area as part of the Upper Hoosatonic Valley National Heritage Area. And these governmental actions, I think, speak to the importance and uniqueness of this area. Finally, A C E C designation will help coordinate and supplement the ongoing stewardship of various resources and facilities in the area. That stewardship is currently being carried out by four municipalities, two state agencies, and at least one non-governmental organization. Now, whether one regards this area through the prism of the A C E C regulations or a simple love of a great river and its place in our community, the conclusion is identical. The Upper Hoosatonic River qualifies and deserves designation as an area of critical environmental concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ames. Next is Bernard Drew.
Undersecretary Griffiths, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Bernard Drew. I live in Great Barrington. I am past President of the Berkshire Historical Society, and I served on the steering committee that proposed to Congress the creation of the Upper Hoosatonic National Heritage Area. At the request of Save the Hoosatonic, I prepared an inventory of historical resources within this proposed A C E C. I stand here largely to remind you of its existence, 21 some pages within the printed submission. When I undertook to do this research, I had some hope of discovering that Herman Melville, in a fit of creativity, each morning had risen from his bed and crossed the street and walked down to the Hoosatonic River, harpoon in hand, tossing diligently a turtle so that he could more accurately depict such in his well-known novel of Whaling. Ultimately, I failed in that. The history of this portion of the Hoosatonic River is not...
Let me scratch that note out. I'm sorry I took you down there.
Not near so dramatic, yet it is no less vital to those residents of this area who appreciate what has gone on around them as both guiding what is there existing before our eyes today and may in fact guide what we see in the future. The scenes that were shown on the screen earlier depict the rich naturalness of this section. Not shown were the northeastern portion of the proposed area, which is now largely residential from its earlier agricultural use, nor the southern portion, which has seen the rise of a good number of industrial uses. I mention these not in a negative sense, only to point out what is there now and show how they have worked into the existing environment. And I respectfully suggest that the A C E C will only further the comfortable living together of residential, industrial, agricultural, and environmental uses.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Next is Jay Bauer.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Jay Baver. I'm a Lenox resident. 20 years ago, I graduated from this very high school. I went on to earn a bachelor's in economics and a master's in business administration from the University of Massachusetts at Amherst. I am also the last student to graduate from the former Lenox Institute of Water Technology, where I received my master's of engineering in water technology under the direction of Dr. Milos Crofta, the man who invented the water filtration system where we all get our drinking water from. During my last semester of school at the Lenox Institute of Water Technology, I produced a television show pilot called Berkshire Outdoors. In my hopes of becoming a TV star and having my own television fishing show, I sent it to a bunch of different companies. One of the companies I sent it to, they called me back, and they said, "We like what you did." And they hired me to produce their television show called On the Water TV. This February, On the Water TV will be in its sixth season on Comcast Sports Network. That's the Celtics Network for all of you basketball fans. To give you an idea of how popular fishing is, a typical episode of On the Water TV draws as many viewers as a Boston Bruins hockey game. It was my job to keep track of the ratings, because if we didn't have ratings, we didn't have advertisers, and six years in the TV business is a long time to have advertisers. The episode we filmed here in Lenox on Woods Pond was one of the highest rated shows we ever had. I spent an afternoon on Woods Pond filming ice fishing for Northern Pike. The day I was there, there were 90 anglers on Woods Pond. I have the video. You can buy the show on onthewater.com to check it out. I don't get residuals, so don't think this is a, no, I won't get paid for that. Since the TV show aired, the popularity of Woods Pond as a fishing destination has only grown. As someone already mentioned, it's pretty hard to get 50 anglers. 90 is pretty tough, but the popularity has grown. Any given day during the winter, whether there's a blizzard or it's raining, there's people out there. These people who are there are from all over New England. They're not just local guys. I know there's guys that have been there from Maine, Vermont, eastern Massachusetts. And all these people who come, they're buying coffee, they're buying bait, they're buying gasoline. Some of them are even buying lodging right here in town or in Lee off the Turnpike. We have a little economic engine right down the street here at Woods Pond, right down the street from the high school. This economic engine, it didn't require any zoning or bylaw changes. It didn't require any economic investment. All it required was time and the discovery by anglers like myself and the hundreds of others who enjoy it. One of the greatest things about this little economic stimulator we have right here in town is that it's ever-renewing. Almost everybody who goes there lets the fish go that they catch. The fish come out of the hole, we take a picture, we let them go. This is a self-sustaining economic engine that we have right here in town that maybe a lot of people don't know about, but all the fans of On the Water TV all around New England certainly do. Now, I haven't mentioned the world-class trout fishing that's on the south side of the dam at Woods Pond, or the world-class carp fishing that exists in the pond itself. And I can tell you that as soon as the anglers from Great Britain find out about the carp that are in this pond, you're going to start hearing a lot of funny accents around. The only thing we have to do... The only thing we have to do to nurture and grow this blossoming economic engine is protect it. It's as simple as that. We just have to protect it. The A C E C will help protect the integrity of this fishery that, in my opinion, has only realized a small part of its true potential. I moved back to Lennox to raise my family, and I want to make sure that they can enjoy the river in the same way that I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I hope without a book or movie endorsement coming on, Gene Shag- Chag? I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce it.
Good evening. My name's Gene Shaggy. Or Shaggy.
I couldn't call you Shaggy without knowing who you are.
I'm a resident of Lennox. My mailbox, I think, is in the A C E C, or across the street anyways. I've been authorized to represent the Teconic Chapter of Trout Unlimited, which has 150 members located in central Berkshire County, and the Massachusetts Rhode Island Council of Trout Unlimited, which has some 4,000 members statewide. I'm the most recent past president and chairman of both organizations. By unanimous vote, both boards voted to support the designation of the Upper Housatonic River A C E C as proposed by the Save the Housatonic Coalition. In recent years, Trout Unlimited has partnered with numerous state and federal agencies, conservation organizations, and academic organizations, and formed the Eastern Brook Trout Joint Venture. The scope of the venture covers the area from Maine to South Carolina, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is a member. One of its goals is to conserve, enhance, and restore eastern Brook trout populations that have been impacted by habitat modification. Although it's been determined, although it has been determined by the joint venture that most populations of wild Brook trout in Massachusetts have been classified as reduced, greatly reduced, or extirpated, there still remain some intact populations in the Berkshires, especially in the feeder streams, which feed the Housatonic River from both sides of the river and are part of the proposed A C E C area. This is one of the few places in the state where they still exist, and we are concerned about their protection. Secondly, about four years ago, the Mass Fisheries and Wildlife designated stretches of the Housatonic River in Lee and Glendale as catch-and-release areas. They proved to be great successes, and since then, the areas have become an asset to the Berkshires. These areas have become destination points for fishermen from within our state and from outside. People come as far as New Jersey to fish that area. There's your economic engine on the other side. Fisheries and wildlife biologists have stated that while the fisheries is a success, the water temperature in the summer is on the high end of what trout can tolerate. Any projects which could raise the water temperature by only a few degrees could spell disaster to the trout fishery, which some have deemed as one of the best in New England. The southern end of the proposed A C E C is just a short distance, less than a mile, from the beginning of the catch-and-release area in Lee. We view any additional layer of environmental review and oversight of this watershed, such as the proposed A C E C, as a good thing, which will help to conserve and restore the endangered eastern Brook trout in the feeder streams and preserve the excellent catch-and-release fishery in the Maine River. A C E C designation would help enable future generations to enjoy them as we have. Thank you.
I'm the president of Trout Unlimited. I've been here a few years. Prior to that, I lived in Buffalo, New York for 20 years and worked as a community neighborhood planner, and then lived in Alaska for many years and worked as a planning commissioner and also worked for the Department of Fishing Game, and then moved to Wyoming and was on the state water board that dealt with issues related to reservoirs, streams, and rivers. And so I've had some experience in this area. And I just want to make some direct comments to one of the concerns that was raised tonight, and that's concern about economic development. And my experience in the past has been that in areas that are as the A C E C, it doesn't pre... And I think it's really important to understand that it does not preclude economic development, but creates a partnership and encourages developers to work with the community to recognize the resources that are there. And that, my experience, that it hasn't been a problem, except where you find developers who don't want any kind of restrictions or don't want anybody looking over their shoulder. But majority of developers, and that was part of my job to work with developers, had no problem working with a project like, with the kind of overlay that A C E C suggests, that they were happy to work with it because it gave them some ground rules. So I think that's important to keep in mind when you raise those kinds of issues of economic development, that the A C E C does not preclude economic development. It just creates a partnership that I think is very important for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Renee Wendell.
Hello. My name is Renee Wendell, and I was born and raised in Pittsfield, Massachusetts. I'm representing the Berkshire Environmental Action Team, and we're an environmental advocacy group. I spend most of my days now down in Sheffield, where I run a nature preserve that directly butts the Housatonic River. I'm probably one of the biggest users of the river. I run on average 30 canoe trips in the spring, summer, and fall, and I take about 300 people every year out on the river. I personally can attest to its beauty and its integrity. I have witnessed bald eagles nesting in the Housatonic River just south of the A C E C designation. I have been in the Oxbow Lakes and seen 20-pound northern pike spawning. I have caught five-pound smallmouth bass. It is a really incredible fishery, and I have also hunted October State Mountain for giant whitetail deer. My dad's got a big eight-pointer. He wanted me to tell you. I don't have one.
Tell him we'll enter it in the record.
So it's a beautiful river. Also, my dad and I are entomologists. I don't know if anyone, any entomologists in the house? We study insects, and my father personally and I have witnessed in the George Derry Wildlife Refuge, the veined white, the mustard white that you've seen, and Eleanor Tillinghouse has photos. Anybody can see that butterfly. It's a rare species in many places, but actually pretty common on the site. And if you're lucky to catch the two-week breeding period of the Harris's Checker Spot, he can also be found there. Just north of the A C E C designation in the 80s, my father collected a clemens moth butterfly. And if you don't know that, it's good reason, because it's extirpated in the state. It's extinct. And he also wanted me to tell you that he believes that it probably could be found within the October Mountain State Forest if looked for. Been a lot of facts thrown around, but not a lot of heart talked about. And I know that's not your job, but I want to talk about it. If most of us in this room probably would agree, if you took a magic wand and you went back in time, you could go back and you could stop G E from dumping its PCBs in the river, most of us would, wouldn't we? Well, I tell you, this designation is no less important right now. Right now, you have the magic wand. You have a chance to protect this river from any further destruction, or at least have a little bit of oversight, because so much of what happens today is taken out of our hands. You can put it back in our hands by please accepting this designation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is a familiar name to me and to many of us here, Mr. Derry.
Thank you, Mr. Undersecretary. I know this was a very tough trip up here for you, but if you look at the map, it's all downhill on the way back to Boston, so... I had a lot of notes here tonight. To tell you the truth, everybody's just about covered everything that I want to cover. As I look around here, I think I'm probably the only person in the room that can remember that river at its worst time. I can remember it as an open sewer, and one of the biggest jokes we had when we were kids was, "Let's get in the car after school's out today, and we'll go up and watch it burn." Because everything was dumped into it. And you know, the sad part about this, and the sad part about this is that it was two generations that just thought that river, that everybody, it was so bad that you just threw everything into it anyway. If you went down, if you had a bag of garbage, you lived close to the river, you crossed the bridge, you just threw it in there. And this is what went on for just two generations of people. But today, as I look at this, if we had had the environmental laws back in the 1930s that we have today, we wouldn't be here today. If you saw what went in that river, it was unbelievable. The sewerage in Lennox, the parts that were sewed, the sewerage plant wouldn't even work in the winter, the same as Pittsfield, so they'd just run everything right in the river. Lenox Dale, the sewerage system consists of a big pipe that dumped into the river. So what we've seen here, the river changed colors every time the paper mills changed the color of paper they made. And I'm speaking here right now as a private citizen. I am the chairman of the State Fisheries and Wildlife Board, and it is, the board has discussed this many times, and we approve this A C E C as it is today. And the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife will have a position on this, and it'll be sent into the secretary within 10 days. But if you look at this, if you look at this whole area, it's probably, the wildlife management area is probably the most used wildlife management area in Massachusetts. You've heard of all the things that go on there: bird watching, berry picking, canoeing. You go down there today, and the way that you see people doing just about everything, you heard the talk of ice fishing there. You see people recreating, kayaking there. But this came about all because of one woman that lived in that area, Joan Flood. And Joan Flood talked fish and wildlife into buying a small tract of land there. And she was on the Water Resources Board, and she always kept on saying, "Someday you're going to see this as a beautiful river with all kinds of people." And I used to, when she told me this, she was one of my mentors in conservation, I just kind of laugh to myself and say, "You'll never see anybody in that river." And every time I go buy a bunch of canoes or a bunch of kids there, I think of Joan I think I've covered just about everything that anybody else hasn't covered here. I worked very hard on these notes today, but I want to thank everybody very much for coming here this evening and testifying. And don't forget that our greatest asset is our natural beauty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Phil. I want to, I also want to thank you for coming out to the beautiful Berkshires. George Derry speaks the truth. That's something that's very important out here.
I was told that when I started my job, believe me.
Good on you. And I remember when I came to the Berkshires first, I was living in a house, and the next-door neighbor, oh, it was right on the Housatonic, and I saw this neighbor, he was throwing his trash in the river. Honest to God, that was really... And I asked him what he was doing. It did not come from the Berkshires, and he said, "Well, this is a trash river." It regards a trash river, and this is what I do. And he said, "I actually don't throw it in the river. I throw it on the banks and light a fire, and so it's consolidated." But this river had a terrible reputation. But today, like you just said, it's all changed, Phil, and it's very important to the life and the heart and the spirit of the Berkshires. And this A C E C, I have been to many hearings in the Berkshires throughout my career, but I have never come across an issue that has brought more support and depth of support. And it's been a great pleasure to myself and to others to see the depth of that support. And one, I think, of the support that has been the sportsmen, who through their league has given basically their entire treasury to make this possible, this nomination possible. And then, we're very proud that very recently Ducks Unlimited, who is not one that is known to give money freely into the Berkshires, but actually take a lot of money out of the Berkshires, has committed to match the league in support of this nomination. And there's two people I want to thank, because I don't think, I know that we would not be here tonight if it weren't for them. The first is Leslie Luchanik, who is a former director of the program and a great friend of the Berkshires. This will be the fourth nomination, successful nomination of an A C E C in the Berkshires. And, I'm sorry, fifth, fifth one, my apologies. And the other is Eleanor Tillinghouse, who, from Greenberg, who did the great majority of the drafting of the nomination which is before you. And she was described by a friend this morning as something akin to a small bull terrier. And it is, I have to, I think more directly, she's the most dogged person that we have ever had, and I'm truly grateful for her support. And I thank you, Secretary, again for coming out here, and to Lisa Sorenson for helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Shep Evans.
Good evening. My name is Shep Evans. I am here representing the Housatonic Valley Association, known as HVA. The Housatonic Valley Association is the oldest watershed group in America, founded in 1941. We have offices in Massachusetts in South Lee and in Connecticut down at Cornwall Bridge. We've been involved in Housatonic River things for a long time. I note in the secretary's letter, accepting the nomination, in very bold print on the last page, an interest in finding out who's willing to participate in the stewardship group. And I want to let you know, Mr. Undersecretary, and Ms. Sorenson, that the Housatonic Valley Association is here for the duration. We most certainly will participate. And I have one little side comment personally. I had the great privilege of participating in a very successful earlier A C E C nomination and stewardship council in Stockbridge, the Campusa Bog Stewardship Committee, and during Mr. Luchanik's time at the program. And I wanted to comment something based on that experience. For 10 years, we worked, this remarkable group of stakeholders, who pulled together to form the stewardship committee and to establish a stewardship plan for Campusa Bog, a rare and wonderful place, as is the Upper Housatonic. But the thing that was so remarkable about that was, for any of you, anyone in this room who has been involved in advocacy matters in this area, to see together in one room on a regular basis, every month, happily participating with each other in a constructive, open, and positive way, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, the Marion Fathers, Mass Department of Environmental Management, the A C E C program itself, Mass Fisheries and Wildlife, Mass Highway, Mass Historical Commission, the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program, the Turnpike Authority, the Nature- the Turnpike Authority, the Nature Conservancy, the Conservation Commission in Stockbridge, the Conservation Commission in Lee, the Lee and Stockbridge Land Trusts, and the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company. If ever there was an entity which you might prejudge as being afraid of an ACEC designation, it would be the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company. They have a pipeline that runs right through Campusa Bog. These guys signed on at the outset, they've been positive contributing members of the stewardship committee, and it's a shining example of how people of goodwill can come together and make real constructive progress. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to make comment.
Mark Jester?
Thank you. My name is Mark Jester. I'm the president of the Berkshire County League of Sportsmen. I'm also here representing the Lennox Sportsman's Club, which is down on New Lennox Road. We have a membership of over 300 members of men, women, and children. Our property lies in the heart of the ACEC, and the Lennox Sportsman's Club signed on as a supporter, and 100%. I'm here tonight, though, to represent the Berkshire County League of Sportsmen. We are one of the nominators of the ACEC. We represent 23 organizations from Williamstown to Sheffield. Back in August, we signed on as a supporter, as a nominator, and a, with over 3,500 members, and we support this 100% unanimously. Some people look at the, as Shep was just saying, you look at the different entities that are involved here. You have sportsmen, you have Mass Autobahn. Quite honestly, we work very closely with Mass Autobahn. I learned from my friend Jidge Derry years ago with the Guns N' Roses Coalition, and the sportsmen out here in the Berkshires, work very well with Roses. It would be a very entertaining group to sit down with. One of the things that the county league and sportsmen have always been, and that is environmentalist, a few years ago, I saw a bumper sticker on the back of a vehicle that said, "Sportsmen, the first environmentalists in the world." And that's the truth. And we work very hard to maintain that reputation out here in the Berkshires. One of the things that's nice about speaking later in the evening is that most of your comments have already been made by other people, and I do appreciate that. But some of the things that go on along the Housatonic River that the county league supports and does, hunting, fishing, kayaking, canoeing, purchasing land, we've worked with Mass Wildlife and Berkshire Natural Resources Council to help purchase land along the Housatonic River. And we want to continue to do that. I do appreciate the opportunity to come up here and say hello, and say thank you very much for being out here, and to entertain our proposal. And we look forward to hearing a positive result on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't read this next name. It's Deirdre, last name's from Main Street in Lee. As you said, please read your name into the record. I apologize.
My name is Deirdre Consolati, and I live in Lee. I also grew up in the Golden Hill area of Lee, and I will speak to that particular part. That area of Golden Hill is part of the ACEC designation, and this lies within Lee. So I'm also the vice president of the Lee Land Trust, and I would like to give to you after this, signatures from the majority of the members of the board of the Lee Land Trust. Golden Hill is made up of farmland and small slopes and hollows of great beauty that border the Housatonic River on its western edge. And Golden Hill also abuts the Lee Town Forest, a parcel containing a soaring glacial outcropping called the Pinnacle. And this is a landmark for local people from the beginning of the town's history. Wildflowers such as the spring beauty abound in this location. From Golden Hill's highest point, the twin swellings of Mount Greylock can be viewed and appreciated. Golden Hill has come under fire recently. Tracks of farmland have already been converted into high-end housing developments, the most notable being so-called Erskine Park, a takeoff on a name that the inventor George Westinghouse gave to his estate located on the Lee-Lennox line. As a point of history, Westinghouse was an early owner of Golden Hill, and his son donated the town forest and the pinnacle to the Lee community in the 1920s. No wonder the area is prized. Golden Hill also connects with a much wider swath of land and water to its west. There it meets a great pond called Laurel Lake, whose southwest side comprises 200 acres of farmland owned by Hylon Farm, and that farmland extends into the towns of Lennox and in Stockbridge. An area of critical concern designation is always good news for the earth, as Golden Hill serves the role of habitat connector to larger tracts of preserved and preservable land, the ACEC umbrella would prove invaluable, both by protecting the natural resources of Lee and its neighbors, and the town's own local history. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Rich Vinnet?
Thank you. My name is Rich Vinnet. I'm the executive director of the Lee Community Development Corporation. And I'd just like to make a couple of comments about this important designation. The Lee Community Development Corporation is a private nonprofit economic development organization. The CDC often acts in a quasi-public capacity in assisting the town of Lee with projects and policies that generate jobs and investment. The CDC is also involved with economic development policy and coordination on a regional basis, and works regularly with Berkshire Economic Development Corporation, and I see David here tonight, with regional agencies such as Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, state agencies such as the Massachusetts Office of Business Development, and the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. The Lee CDC has developed several projects in the town of Lee, including the Lee Corporate Center and the Quarry Hill Business Park on Route 102. The CDC is currently assisting the town of Lee in economic development planning downtown, and with certain designated priority development sites, principally mill sites. In its capacity as an economic development organization, the CDC understands the importance of protecting Berkshire County's natural environment. In fact, we've recognized, along with our colleagues, that part of our economic development strategy for the region must include quality of life and natural resource protection as an integral part of that strategy. And I would refer you to such recent documents as the Berkshire Strategy Project and the Berkshire Blueprint. We also see the need for a closer interrelationship between sustainable economic development and environmental stewardship. We believe that the two can coexist. What is more, this interrelationship, as it develops, may be able to create synergies to promote solutions. An example is the opportunity that now exists to develop green jobs and energy projects in the region. The Lee CDC cannot, however, support the current ACEC proposal. We believe that the proposed boundaries will have a substantially negative effect in discouraging economic development projects, job creation, and investment in this industrial corridor. These industrial areas are where state and federal policy has indicated that we should try to redevelop first by reprogramming already disturbed land rather than open space, and using the existing built environment. We believe also that there are sufficient regulatory tools in place already, and that another layer would invite unintended consequences and would be a barrier to creating jobs and investment. There are two main points which the CDC believes should be answered. One, what will an ACEC accomplish relative to the current consent decree? The basis for proposing the Upper Housatonic ACEC, according to Green Berkshires, and most recently in a memo to the Lee Select Board, is to restore some influence to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in being able to deal with the provisions of the GE consent decree. The fear is that General Electric, under the current consent decree, will be able to stockpile PCBs or create a PCB dump within the Housatonic Corridor. No one wants that. The ACEC, we are told, is a tool that will help prevent that from happening. It may be that we should not take it on faith that the ACEC designation would prevent that scenario. There are some unanswered questions in that regard. Is there a record, for example, of legal dialogue that should be reviewed? Did the Attorney General's Office provide an opinion to any state agency relative to the consent decree in the past? Does any state agency have a legal opinion as to the efficacy of the ACEC designation to restore influence to the state when dealing with the consent decree? Does the ACEC designation restore or otherwise change legal standing to bring an action in the event that the local community disagrees with the method of cleanup that's prescribed in the present consent decree? Secondly, if the ACEC is not an effective tool for restoring state influence, then why are we contemplating putting it in place here? If the purpose is to further protect the area in general, without particular reference to the GE EPA activities and the consent decree, then we must be opposed to that on the grounds that there are adequate existing regulations that serve to protect the area proposed for the ACEC. Projects already receive adequate scrutiny under the current law. Even within the context of the present proposal for an ACEC, not enough attention has been given to the possibility that, on balance, an ACEC may seriously impede our ability to attract jobs and investment to the area, and do little further to protect the area. As provided in the regulations governing the ACEC proposals, there needs to be a good balancing of environmental issues with other concerns, including those that have been proposed by other state agencies when we are urged to redevelop first and to engage in principles of sustainable development. We're concerned that there may be a great potential for unintended consequences which would hinder good economic projects to restore jobs lost in the past year with the many mill closings in the area. Because of these concerns, the Lee CDC Board of Directors is not able to support the ACEC proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is George Wheeler.
My name is George Wheeler. I'm from Lee. I kind of felt like a skunk at a lawn party up until the last speaker, because I was not knowledgeable enough to know what was going on here until I read, no, it's morning's, or yesterday's Berkshire Eagle. I'm somebody who follows Barney Frank very closely. It seems like that fellow opens his yap, it costs me money. And when I read that one of the questioners at the meeting in Lennox said that he hoped that the, repeating the last speaker's comment, that a new layer of bureaucracy would make it very difficult for industrial development, or profit-making, or whatever kind of development. And I was very upset by Eleanor Tillingham's comment to the effect that ACEC doesn't impede economic progress. And she cited the Taunton River as an example. That's where my friend Barney Frank comes in. I sat through a television program where he defended the determination to change a area along the Taunton River from possible use as a site for unloading natural gas, to become what was supposed to be a development area into something that is now impossible to develop, to develop, because it's become part of a additional land site that is not developable. So I was just a little bit upset that ECAC having been included as a great example in the Taunton area, and know that Barney Frank doesn't work for nothing, he does get paid to run for Congress, that somehow or other, maybe they don't do all the things they're supposed to do. So I'll continue as a skunk at a lawn party. But I do think that that has to be thought out, and it should have been expressed to the audience at the last meeting in Lennox. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Next, Steve Pavlowski. I'm sorry if I've got the name incorrect. From the Lennox Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
I'm Steve Pavlowski, chairman of the Lennox Board of Selectmen. And again, thank you for coming out and listening to all this input, and what's yet to come. First, I'll start off by saying the town of Lennox, since the onset of this process, has been a supporter, and we are one of the nominators of the ACEC. We've had a lot of discussion at town level. We've listened at previous public meetings that you have run. We've had a number of specific town meetings on this subject. We've had private discussions and all kinds of work being done, basically to listen to opponents and proponents before we formalized a position. After listening to all the discussion last night, the Lennox Board of Selectmen and the Lennox Planning Board voted unanimously to formally take a position where we will approve the ACEC as it is currently submitted, with its original intent and its original boundaries. Our reasons are pretty simple. As you know, and there's been some reference to it, when the consent decree was signed originally to start this process, it was between General Electric, the state, the EPA, and Pittsfield. And essentially, the state and ultimately the towns below Pittsfield really were cut out of the process. And so what is currently happening is happening because of agreements and decisions being made by those associations that signed on originally, but not with much ability to input or have any influence in terms of what goes on, for instance, in Lennox, which we are particularly concerned about. I guess we view, in looking at the ACEC, while it's not perfect, it is a vehicle, and probably the only vehicle available that would give us some input and give the state some input in terms of what that final cleanup or mediation process looks like. We have some concerns as a town, and essentially, they basically come down to maintaining the current resource that we have that's known as the Housatonic. And it's a critical resource recreationally, and it's a critical resource ecologically. Eleanor's presentation earlier showed you what it is today. You only have to go a few miles north to look at what has been done in Pittsfield to date, to see what it can be in the future. That's the other extreme. And that's a major concern for us in terms of maintaining this critical resource. And that's a major concern for us in terms of maintaining this critical resource in what we have and making sure that it is what it is today going forward. Secondly, as currently projected with the plans that have been discussed publicly by both General Electric and the EPA going forward, the potential impact on the citizens of Lenox, particularly the citizens of Lenoxdale and New Lenox Road, which are the north and south terminuses of the activity within Lenox of any cleanup activity, is really very much concern. When you look at the type of activity that's being projected, the economic impact on anybody owning any property in that area from a disruption point, from a duration of the time that this would go on, is of great concern to us. And one of the major points we want to make sure is that we have some ability to protect the citizens of Lenox, but particularly Lenoxdale and New Lenox Road from being financially and future impact in their asset value going forward. I guess the third one would be, and it's been mentioned, looking at making sure that we can protect and preclude any kind of PCB storage, any kind of PCB dumping, or any PCB staging in the area. And hopefully that, and that's not just Lenox, that's basically the whole area that's in this cleanup process. We think there are other alternatives and a number have been discussed in previous meetings and obviously will be looked at going forward. We plan to work with the coalition of nominators and the state to get the best outcome for Lenox residents and for the Housatonic River. We believe the A C E C, as it currently is proposed, does give us a tool to help make that happen. We will be giving you a letter with the formal position of Lenox Select Board and Planning Board within the comment period. But again, we thank you for coming and we urge you to approve this as it's currently submitted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis Regan.
Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about this nomination. I am also a nominator. My name is Dennis Regan and I am Regional Director for the Housatonic Valley Association. And I have submitted written comments already, but I'd just like to do a quick summarization. I live in the town of Beckett now, but I previously lived in the town of Hinsdale. And thanks to the good grace of Leslie Luchanek, sure, to the good grace of Leslie Luchanek's efforts, we were able to have an A C E C designated in the Hinsdale Flats area, which is a 14,000 acre. And we all knew it was a beautiful, unique, critical area. But to get that extra designation, the official designation, that it is a unique area in the Commonwealth enabled us to just review, stay with the MIPA process that we have, but just make sure that any kind of proposals that go on in that specific designated area has a thorough review. So our interpretation was that there weren't any new laws passed that were going to restrict any development in there, except for the possibility of a landfill, but that the existing laws would just be used. So in a case of Hinsdale, life went on as usual for 10 years until, well, I moved out, but not that it's changed since I moved. But that the sand and gravel operations continued to operate, any kind of industry continued to be an industrial area. The landscapers still landscaped, but what we had was an opportunity, again, to review, have a little bit more thorough review of environmental programs. So after 10 years, we realized that people in the community didn't realize that they lived in an A C E C area. And not that that was critical, but we thought that people should know about it because there's a lot more people coming into that area than in the past. So about two years ago, we formulated the stewardship committee for the Hinsdale Flats A C E C area, the primary concern being just awareness, letting people know where they live and why they live, and to get out and appreciate where they live. The program, A C E C program, does offer a beneficial layer of environmental protection, but not all communities in the Commonwealth have the benefit of having the wealth of resources that are needed to qualify as for the A C E C status. And I personally feel that the proposed Upper Housatonic Designated Area does meet and even exceed the required threshold for acceptance as an A C E C area. Therefore, I strongly urge the acceptance of this nomination. And again, thank you for your time and efforts of coming out.
Thank you very much. Chris Horton.
Hi, I'm Chris Horton from Pittsfield, and I want to speak to the interests of agriculture. I think there needs to be an agricultural component to the Housatonic A C E C application. Agriculture has a long history in the proposed area dating back to the Indians. Many farmers, living and gone, have provided benefits to humans and wildlife through stewardship of these soil and water resources. Preservation of scenic vistas, open spaces for recreation, and enhancement of wildlife habitat for game and non-game species are all the result of agricultural activities. In addition, we see the benefits of locally produced agricultural products and the resulting economic activity associated with farms. Surprisingly, there has been little mention of the current or future importance of agriculture to the A C E C area, other than anecdotal references to agricultural remnants. Nor has there been outreach to agricultural producers in the affected area. Any discussion as to the cleanup of the rest of the river or the designation of the area of critical environmental concern should include input and participation from the local agricultural community. Thank you.
Next, I'm not sure the first name, Leslie McNulty Vaughan, first initial K. I got that right? Okay, thank you very much. Charles Gianferini? Thank you very much. And Barbara as well? Thank you very much. David Rooney? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Barbara Gianferini. Wise man. What's your wife?
My name is Barbara Gianferini, and yes, I do all the speaking for my husband. I live in Pittsfield, and I am a founding member of Citizens for PCB Removal and a community rep on the Citizens Coordinating Council, which is the open meetings held monthly or quarterly to oversee the cleanup of the Pittsfield sites and the Housatonic River in general. CPR is one of the nominators of the A C E C and one of the founding members of H C R C, which initiated this issue today. We were founded in 1997, 12 years ago, as a small grassroots citizen environmental advocacy group designed to help homeowners, property owners, and business owners to advocate for the most complete cleanup of their contaminated properties in Pittsfield as possible. And we are nominators and under the promise that this designation would do so with the assurance that it was not meant to prevent or stymie a thorough and protective cleanup of the contaminated parts of the river, woods, pond, the banks, the floodplains, et cetera. We oppose widespread and wholesale indiscriminate dredging of the river and its floodplains. We oppose any and all landfills, dumps, or quote "material consolidation areas" along the river or in adjacent communities. However, we do support the investigation of and the implementation of pilot programs using new innovative remedial technologies such as the earthworm enzyme methods, which use organic, natural, and relatively non-invasive, in-situ, on-site remediation technologies. PCBs and other contaminants from the former GE Transformer Plastics and Chemical Plants are continuing health threats to both the natural environment, plants and animals, and the people who live, work, and recreate in these areas and in Berkshire County in general. PCBs bioaccumulate in plants, animals, and people, which means they build up, and especially along the food chain. So it is, your exposure increases with time and with exposure to things in the environment, such as if you eat fish or wildlife caught in these areas. So this is important to us, not just from a visual point of view, but from a health and safety standpoint. So we do support the A C E C designation in connection with a thoughtful and prudent and carefully deliberate continued cleanup of this river for the benefit of both the natural world and our human community. Like a cancer in an innocent host, these contaminants must be extracted or neutralized in some way. Doing nothing is not an option. Thank you.
David Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Undersecretary. I appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity to come out tonight and comment on the A C E C designation as it's currently proposed, as we work to balance out our important natural resource protection with also very necessary job creation here in Berkshire County. I'm David Rooney. I'm President of the Berkshire Economic Development Corporation. I speak tonight in consideration of a modest modification to the proposed boundary for the A C E C to exclude the former Schweitzer-Medwe Niagara Mill Site in Lenoxdale, near the very southern boundary of the proposed A C E C. A new business project currently exists to redevelop the former Niagara Mill Site for a renewable energy project to produce biodiesel fuel. This adaptive reuse of the site would also include an opportunity to use the existing rail line to bring in material and ship out finished goods. It could create 30-plus new jobs and leverage some $30 million in new investment. It would return an existing and historic industrial property to the tax rolls. It would bring another renewable energy company to Berkshire County. And it would help to meet Governor Patrick's stated objectives of generating 2% of diesel fuel in Massachusetts with biodiesel by the year 2010. In these very difficult economic times, the competition for new job-creating renewable energy projects in particular is fierce. Including the Niagara Mill Site in the designation, even though the site has been an industrial site for more than a century, could well impose enough additional time and cost to lead the developer to choose another site outside of Berkshire County. Careful consideration of the boundary and this modification will help, I think, to find a balance, a necessary balance, between our natural resource preservation and vital job creation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jonathan Lothrup, and I'm a city councillor in Pittsfield. I represent Ward Five, which is the southwest corner of Pittsfield, for those of you who are familiar with that area. In the ward that I represent, we do have the southwest and the west branch of the Housatonic River. And I am a nominator of the A C E C, and I want to speak really as to why I am the nominator for that. I think that in Pittsfield, we have some pretty unique experience about remediation on the river. I was not involved in city politics prior to the place with regards to the consent decree. I think there are some good things about the consent decree. A lot of cleanup has occurred. I think there's some bad things about the consent decree. We have these large OPCA's, the Consolidated Areas of Waste, in our community. I think the A C E C, to me, is an opportunity for this generation of leadership, in my mind, to learn something from the past and to do it better this time. I know that some portions of this A C E C are in Pittsfield and some of them are not. I certainly concur much with the woman from CPR, frankly, who talked about not wanting to see indiscriminate dredging of the entire flood area. I think that would be a pretty inappropriate result. I think a lot of folks in Pittsfield are not really aware of it, but there have been conversations back and forth, obviously with the EPA and G E, about the rest of the river. And I think there is a lot of resistance to the cookie cutter approach the G E has proposed. I realize the A C E C is not the answer to all of our prayers, and it will probably not provide as much protection as some people in this room may desire. But I also think it will not create the undue burden and harm that some other people fear. I think it is a tool, and I think it's part of the conversation. I know there is some concern from the municipality's point of view, and I just want to make it clear, I'm speaking for myself right now. There is some concern in the community in Pittsfield with regards to two municipal sites that are part of this, the wastewater treatment plant and the reservoir that's located in Lenox. Both of these sites are really community resources. They don't generate profit, and they don't benefit one party. Much of the municipal water, frankly, in many towns in central Berkshire, including Pittsfield, portions of Lenox, Lanesboro, Dalton, do originate from Pittsfield water supply. And there is some concern about the impact of the A C E C on any needed dam repairs. And also with the wastewater treatment plant, we are under order from the EPA to do an upgrade to our wastewater treatment facility plant. We realize we'll have to go through ENF and probably MIPA for any of those processes. There is some concern about taking those pieces of property out of the A C E C. They are municipal purposes. They most likely would be considered a single-intent project, I think is the term, I'm probably getting it wrong, but for the purposes of any permitting. But there is that concern, and I think that part of this conversation needs to go forward, needs to consider those, because we do need to balance upgrading our wastewater treatment plant with the fact that, quite frankly, we will be putting a lot of burden on the rate payers, including a lot of residents in Lenox, in the future when we have to go ahead and do that. So I think we have to balance out the environmental concerns, but also looking at the affordability of those projects. And I think in some respect, the A C E C, if you look at the reservoir in Lenox, it's at the easternmost boundary, and the site in Pittsfield that holds the wastewater treatment plant, frankly, is pretty limited in terms of its specificity. So I'd like to enter those comments for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryony Angus? She still here? Oh, there she is.
Good evening. My name's Bryony Angus. I am an environmental planner with Ty &amp; Bond, we're an engineering and environmental consulting firm located in Westfield. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Green Berchers. Previous to my employment with Ty &amp; Bond, I was an environmental analyst with the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office at EEA, MIPA, as most of you know. And I had the opportunity, as a MIPA analyst, to review many projects within the four communities in the proposed A C E C boundary and within already existing ACACs across the Commonwealth. There are 74 municipalities that have ACACs within their boundaries. Ty &amp; Bond was retained by Green Berchers to conduct research regarding the impact of the A C E C designation on the MIPA environmental review process and the Wetlands Protection Act permitting process. And I'd like to just note that Ty &amp; Bond has no formal opinion on the Upper Housatonic A C E C nomination. So our research involved, we looked at nine municipalities across the state. None of them are the four that are within the Upper Housatonic nomination. We looked at Easton, Groton, Lancaster, Norton, Norwood, Pepperell, and Taunton. Those are seven that were generally determined to be representative. Those are seven that were generally determined to be representative municipalities that had AC/ECs in them, that had some level of existing and ongoing development within them. And then we also looked at Hinsdale and Sheffield within the Berkshires. We reviewed the MEPA record for all environmental notification forms. That's the initial thing, initial submission that one submits to the MEPA office for a project. So all environmental notification forms within AC/ECs, with particular attention being paid to those projects that involved wetland impacts, specifically impacts to bordering vegetated wetlands. And the goal of the research was to try and ascertain, through looking at the MEPA record, whether a variance from the Wetlands Protection Act has been required in the past for projects within AC/ECs that involved impacts to bordering vegetated wetlands. That was our, that was our goal. So our findings, based on our research, I'll just review them very briefly for you. We did not find any instances of variances that have been required, with the possible exception of the Ashmere Lake Dam project, I'm sure we're all familiar with that, and the need for a variance on that project has not yet been determined. The record demonstrates that those projects within AC/ECs that do involve bordering vegetated wetland impacts have generally been permitted pursuant to the limited project provisions of the Wetlands Protection Act. There were three projects where the limited project provisions did not apply, and those three projects underwent design revisions during the course of MEPA review, such that the BVW impacts were eliminated. And I'll just note that the Ashmere Lake Dam project, regardless of the AC/EC designation, that's in the Hinsdale Flats AC/EC, that project would require a variance from the Wetlands Protection Act regardless of the AC/EC designation, because as currently proposed, it's going to impact greater than one acre of bordering vegetated wetlands. And some other findings, the projects that were subject to MEPA review solely by virtue of being in an AC/EC, the majority of them did not require further review from the MEPA office in the form of an environmental impact report. Those projects that did require an environmental impact report or an EIR were all subject to that EIR requirement by virtue of meeting other thresholds, for example, water withdrawal, land alteration, transportation. There is no EIR threshold for AC/ECs. And I also just like to note that there, we note that, obviously, there are many projects that occur within AC/ECs that have wetland impacts that the MEPA office would never see, because the impacts were so small or the projects didn't involve a state agency action. Those projects are reviewed by the local conservation commissions. If those projects were determined to not be eligible for review under the limited project provisions, furthermore, determined to require a variance from the act, those projects would then require a superseding order of conditions from DEP and then MEPA review. But again, it's the variance that would be triggering MEPA review and not the AC/EC. I know that's a lot of, I know some of you in this room probably understand that a lot more than some others. I know that's a complicated and very brief synopsis of the review that we did, but in general, the message is, is that the AC/EC designation has not resulted in a more intensive level of review for projects within their boundaries. And with regard to the concern that wetland impacts within AC/ECs require a variance from the Wetlands Protection Act, our review of the record demonstrates that if those projects are able to be reviewed pursuant to the limited project provisions, they do not need a variance, don't need an EIR, and in many cases, the MEPA process has enabled regulators and project proponents to work together to eliminate the need for a variance if the project was not able to go under the limited project provisions. Thank you.
I came here as a private citizen, generally speaking, but I served on the Conservation Commission in Stockbridge for 11 years, chair for six. I served on the Campusa Bog Stewardship Committee, my very own property, actually, as part of the AC/EC for Campusa Bog. I've been out on Leslie's Great Adventure on the bog. And I can tell you from personal experience that, as a regulator, that the actual process that's triggered by having an AC/EC in your, in your area, as was just spoken about, really does not create any additional layer of concern for anybody. And if it's a, if it's a project that needs to be reviewed by your local conservation commission, it will be reviewed by your local conservation commission. And if it's a project that, under any circumstances, would be reviewed by MEPA, it will be reviewed by MEPA anyway. So the AC/EC designation will not change that. My own personal relationship, if you will, with the, with the river, my aunt and uncle live on the corner of Holmes Road and the Housatonic River, right next to Canoe Meadows. So I spent a lot of time there as a child. I've canoed on it myself often. My son is an ice fisherman, and my husband canoes on it often as well. And I've gone birding with my cousins, who is a dragonfly expert, and she's tried to teach me the various species that are available to be seen on the, on the Housatonic. When I have to say, I find myself completely inadequate to telling one dragonfly from the other, but she gets very excited about it. It's, it's an important thing for the area to have this layer of protection. It's been, it's been an amazing experience with Campusa Bog to have that and to have the interest focused of scholars around the country and particularly in the state. And those scholars, once the AC/EC is designated, take a much more serious view of the area. And I think there's a lot that can be done if that designation goes through, so I would urge you to accept the designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Schur?
I'm Roger Schur. I'm the mill manager for the Schweitzer-Medwee Mills in Lee and the Niagara Mill in Lenoxdale. And I can say that Rich Vanette from the Lee CDC did a great job of paraphrasing, acting more eloquently, explaining the concerns that I share. And so my, my thing's going to be a lot shorter, and this is actually the good, the bad, and the ugly. The good is the AC/EC provides the state with a tool, maybe useful in dealing with the EPA and GE. It raises environmental awareness in the designated area. The bad, Pittsfield, Lee, Lennox are losing businesses. Additional environmental burden on remaining businesses and properties in the designated areas is not good. Permitting times may be unacceptably long or extended or costly. You've always got to get a consulting engineer to submit whatever application for these environmental forms. It raises your cost. New expansions or businesses may be discouraged in this area. The ugly, when the PCBs are cleaned up, the AC/EC remains forever. EPA could ignore the state and this tool. The business is in the area forever under the tighter requirements. Also, GE could welcome the AC/EC. For them, let the EPA in Massachusetts fight on the sidelines. GE has then another tool to use in litigating to a point of never doing anything. That would be not good. So the conclusion for, for me is that there should be another way for these, these very, very important groups and the state to work with the EPA to achieve the goals that you really, that has been driving this, to work with GE to make sure the right thing is done. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about six folks left, so I appreciate everybody being concise with their, with their messages. This has gone very well. Edward Armstrong?
Edward Armstrong, born and raised right here in the heart of Lennox. I guess I have to go back to Mr. Wendell's point and speak more from the heart than anything else. As a child, I spent many days on that river in a canoe. Some of you may remember the Upper Housatonic Canoe Race. Believe it was sponsored by Mountain Dew. Was a very good, a very good race. My father spent a lot of time in the spring helping clean the river from Pomroyev down to what is now the boat launch in New Lennox. So I have, I have a lot of feelings about the river itself. Spent countless days as a young child on the mountain, on the western slopes of October Mountain, hunting deer with my father. And currently fish that river in particular from, I don't know, like the back of Jimmy's Restaurant all the way to the southern end of Sheffield. I think it's been said over and over again tonight that we're going to have, we're going to be able to use the AC/EC as a tool in our future as users of these, of these facilities, the river, the mountains, the access roads. I don't see, I don't see where we could go wrong with the AC/EC. I know there's a lot of question about the cleanup, and that's going to have to be dealt with at some point, I'm sure. But I guess I just want to say that it has a very strong place in my heart that we protect this area, not only the river, but the surrounding lands, wetlands and mountain ridges in this area. And I strongly support the AC/EC. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginny Acabane?
Thank you, Mr. Undersecretary, for coming out. My name is Ginny Acabane. I'm from Stockbridge, and I'm here representing myself. I use the proposed Upper Housatonic AC/EC area for canoeing, birdwatching, hiking, and snowshoeing. As you've heard, it's a unique area thanks to the amount of variety of wildlife and the large area open to public creation. I almost always see other people using the area at the same time, whichever activity I am doing. It's very heavily used. The area contains endangered species, and as you've heard, it's been declared an important bird area by Mass Audubon. I'm in favor of the AC/EC. This area is worthy of a high level of concern and protection. For example, what I've read of the proposed GE cleanup makes me very worried. If dredging the next five miles entails straightening the river, as happened in Pittsfield, the wildlife will disappear and the recreational enjoyment will diminish drastically. If the second five-mile stretch is covered with five inches of sand, it will no longer be, be possible to canoe through Woods Pond in the summer, nor will this be a cleanup of the river. It won't even be a reduction of the PCBs. They'll still be there in the same amount they are now. I would like to see any restoration of the river minimize adverse effects on the habitat, the marine and land resources, and the scenic and recreational resources. I think the AC/EC designation will not only make a difference in EPA's negotiations with GE, but will also make a big difference in the environmental sensitivity of future projects along the river. The AC/EC affects projects that require state permits or receive state money. I've read a memo from Berkshire Regional Planning that it will not affect the dam restoration up in Hinsdale Flats. It will not affect the wastewater treatment plant in Pittsfield. It will not affect an awful lot of businesses that are concerned about this extra layer of environmental protection. If you're not getting state money or getting state permits, it doesn't affect you. If you're an individual residence owner, it doesn't affect you. It doesn't affect the agricultural people. Those projects requiring state permits or receiving state money should be held to close scrutiny. A stewardship group should be involved. Public participation has often resulted in an improved project design that reduces environmental impact. Therefore, I think the AC/EC boundaries should be drawn by, should be as drawn by the biologists. As you can tell, I'm not used to talking in front of a bunch of people. If certain parts are not included, for whatever reason, the rest of the area may not get the environmental protection that an AC/EC designation will provide for the whole of the ecosystem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce Avencik? Avencik? You had to leave? Deanna Ruffer?
I am the City of Pittsfield's Community Development Director, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Mayor Roberto and his administration. As has been noted, a quarter, one quarter of the land proposed within the AC/EC is within the City of Pittsfield. The City has taken very seriously our responsibility to the city's residents to fully understand and analyze this proposal, and we appreciate all of those that have answered our questions and recognized our need for independent and objective analysis. The City supports efforts to ensure continued protection of important land and other natural resources within the Housatonic watershed. The concept for the AC/EC was originally presented to us as benefiting the decision-making process for the cleanup of the Housatonic River. The City supports this objective. Independently, the City is actively engaged with the parties involved in making decisions about the remediation for the rest of the river and is encouraging a thorough evaluation of all appropriate technologies. Regardless of whether an AC/EC is established, the City will continue to vigilantly protect the interests of its residents and the ecology of the river and watershed. At the same time, the City is concerned the AC/EC designation will add significant cost and time to project permitting within the proposed boundary, especially where even minor bordering vegetated wetland loss is proposed. In particular, we are concerned about the impact this designation could have on future important city projects, such as the development of a recreational bike path and one or more canoe launches, as well as upgrades to our municipal wastewater treatment plant. The City is prepared to endorse the AC/EC designation if the boundaries of the AC/EC are modified to exclude city-owned land associated with the wastewater treatment plant, as well as the Farnham Reservoir and associated city-owned lands in Lennox. The land we are seeking to have excluded represents less than 4% of the total area proposed to be designated. Finally, the City asks that a formal seat be designated on the AC/EC Steering Committee for each of the municipalities with land in the AC/EC. This representation will foster coordination of AC/EC activities with municipal land use, decision-making, and environmental protection activities of the municipalities. We thank you for your time and, Undersecretary, for coming out to our beautiful sitting county. And the mayor and our Conservation Commission chairman anticipate submitting written comments as well.
Thank you very much. I believe councillor Michael Ward? Pittsfield?
My name is Mike Ward. I am city councillor from Pittsfield, representing Ward Four, which is the southeast corner and the area affected by the proposed AC/EC in Pittsfield. I would like to start by acknowledging I would like to start by acknowledging and thanking the Steering Committee members of the AC-EC, not only for their, for their efforts in this initiative, but for, for really decades of work and stewardship of the river. Thank you to all of you. I'd like to start by discussing the thing that initially motivated me to be a nominator of the AC-EC, and that is the, the uplands protection aspect of it. Because obviously there are very strong protections offered by the Wetlands Protection Act in the, in the river area, in the wetlands area. So why was I so interested and drawn to the upland protection? Because like many of you, last year, I was at Lee High School in the cafeteria listening to GE's Rest of River presentation. And like many of you, I was scratching my head when I looked at the proposal and it was just various levels of dredging and, and then storing, and specifically storing the dredge materials in what was called upland, upland facilities, upland storage facilities, I believe was the term used. Now, these upland storage facilities would most likely fall near my constituents in Ward Four, my, my friends and neighbors off of Holmes Road and my friends and neighbors off of Eastern Lennox Road. So, you know, not only do I, not only can I not support a cleanup plan that results in no net loss of PCBs, but it merely moves them around like a shell game, if you are going to do this, I also object to the fact that a side effect is that we will have an additional, an additional dump, Hills 79, as some people have called it, in Ward Four. So my appeal, the appeal of AC-EC to me was an additional layer of protection against what I consider the worst-case plan in a cleanup. Now, I hasten to add that I'm one of the people that's working to envision a smarter cleanup plan, a plan that spends money on science rather than on bulldozers and backhoes, a plan that evolves with time as some of the methods that were discussed earlier are developed, a plan that sees us as the center of innovation of the world for next-generation PCB cleanup. However, I support the AC-EC because while I'm trying to envision a better plan, I'm also preparing for the worst-case scenario, which could be some flavor of what GE proposed. And, and I absolutely don't want to see that. I would also urge the DCR to consider the amendments proposed by Mayor Roberto because I have to respect the, the time that went into the analysis. I know a lot of the benefits are debatable on this and a lot of the liabilities are debatable. And I do respect the time and analysis that went into examining potential effects to Farnham Reservoir, the potential effects to, you know, just maintenance and ongoing operations of the wastewater treatment plant, not something new, not something commercial. But I do have to balance the very good protections of this, of this tool with, with the infrastructure responsibilities of the city of Pittsfield. So I hope the DCR approves the, the AC-EC designation and I hope you also seriously consider Mayor Roberto's very modest amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. David Shook?
Well, one of the great things about being towards the end is you can be rather long-winded, I guess. My name's Dave Shook. I represent Mass Trails Association. We're an umbrella group that represents the ATV, OHV community in the state of Massachusetts. Roughly, we support the AC-EC, but not as the boundaries stand. The motorized community brings a lot of money into this area and with having, you know, the state having shut down most of our riding areas in the last 15 years, gone from 32 riding areas to just presently three and a half, Talon State Forest being the half. You know, we propose that, that this would just add another layer of bureaucracy, red tape, to any trail maintenance that we would need to do on October Mountain State Forest, which is one of the designated areas that we are allowed to ride. It doesn't seem like much, but we're a volunteer group and it's, as written in the state DCR Trail Criteria Program, that if it is an AC-EC area, we are allowed to ride in that area, but in order to maintain it, we have to get special permits, we have to, you know, there's all sorts of red tape that we, we don't have the time and the effort. I don't really understand why the AC-EC area needs to include all of October Mountain that it does. I understand and accept protecting the river, the wetlands and the lower part of the streams. The state forest is already protected by the state, the DCR. The streams are already protected by the Department of Environmental Protection Agency. I mean, what more do we need? I don't think that we're going to allow GE, I don't think the DCR would allow GE to dump PCBs on October Mountain. So why do we need to include all of, most of October Mountain into that? The only other thing, you know, that I, that I really wanted to, to stress is that, you know, we, we do bring a lot of, lot of business into this area. Ask Al North. He's one of the citizens of Lennox. And, you know, the, the people from our organizations buy parts, buy machines from not only him, but Ronnie's up in Pittsfield, you know, New Boston Crane down in, sure, New Boston. So, I mean, there is a component here that we do bring in a lot of, a lot of money, the hotels, the, the gas stations, the, the parts, the service, the, all of those, those aspects of it would be lost if we lost October Mountain. And just to let you know, we will be submitting a letter as to what we'd like to see designated for the boundary. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Undersecretary. My name is Barbara Kellogg. I'm not here representing any group. I'm a landowner in Lennox. My husband and I own 33 acres of forest and farmland that's within the nominated AC-EC area on the edge of October Mountain. I support the AC-EC nomination and I support it without any change of boundaries. This is not just about General Electric and the PCBs in the Husatonic. That's, that's part of it and that's an important part. But this, this nomination is to protect an area of the river and the uplands area. And the uplands goes up to Farnham's Reservoir. I don't think any of the boundaries should be changed. They're all important. The, the reservoir area is important. If the reservoir and the needed industries, we have industries along the river now. I don't think anyone has a problem with any of them and the industries have needed and necessary jobs for the area. But if the industries can't meet the requirements of the AC-EC, then they shouldn't be on the river. We only have to look to Pittsfield to see what could happen when you have an unregulated, with no oversight on an energy company on the river, what can be done? We, we have the ongoing problems forever from that. We have, the consent decree was put in place as it is because of business interests, not interests about the ecological area. The resources in this area, I hear talk about the bittern and the bald eagle. I haven't seen them on my land, but I have seen deer, bear, a moose. We have bobcats, turkeys. My grandson, I'm from Baltimore, says they're pretty big pigeons we have up here, but we do. It's, it's an important and, and necessary area. And I think that the nomination should go through as is without any changes. I think all of us, and myself included as a landowner, if I want to go and get a grant from the state to put in solar panels or to put in a small windmill, I need to go through this process myself. I'm willing to do that. I think it's that important and I think that you should approve the nomination as it is. Thank you.
My name is Philip Heller and I'm an attorney with offices in Lennox. And I'm here on behalf of Interstate Biofuels. We have a very short presentation. I'll be a couple of minutes. Michelle Henderson, who's the chief engineer, will be just a couple of minutes. And Jeffrey Park, who is the senior ecologist for O'Reilly, Talbot and Okem, will just be a couple of minutes. Interstate Biofuels has entered into a letter of intent to purchase the Niagara Mill from Schweitzer. And the mill falls within the AC-EC. And this is a blow-up of the AC-EC map. And the mill is at the very southern portion of the AC-EC map and it's designated in this blue outline. Now, the Interstate Biofuels has no objection to the objectives of the AC-EC. In fact, they believe that the objectives are reasonable objectives and objectives that should be considered and should be adopted. What the concern is, is the balancing of the economic needs of a community with the environmental protection. And what we are proposing is to create a finger-like protrusion into the AS, AC-EC of about 30 to 50 acres. And that boundary would be down Walker Street, down Elm Street, across the river, heading north back about 200 feet setback from the river channel to Henry Street, Church Street, back to the Golden Hill Road. That 30 to 50 acres will constitute 0.04% of the AC-EC as proposed. Now, the AC-EC is 12,280 acres. And as an example of what the size of that is, the whole town of Lennox is about 13,000 acres. So what the proponents have proposed is an area just a little bit smaller than the whole town of Lennox. Now, in this site that we are proposing is a mill. It's on 5.5 acres and then there's a small little section of 0.5 acres. That's all in our submission. And the mill is this location and this location. This mill has been there for 100 years and the whole area has been heavily disturbed, cleared or paved. And most important, it's located in the industrial zone of Lennox. And the industrial zone is a very small zone. And as our environmental consultant will testify to, that the site does not contribute to the ecological interest of the AC-EC. Now, Interstate Biofuels is proposing a biodiesel plant. The prop, the, the project is about a $30 million project. It will generate between 35 and 40 jobs and it's consistent with the Commonwealth's Massachusetts Initiative to reduce emissions of greenhouse gases through the development of alternative fuels. If the site is included in the AC-EC, the project will have to go through another layer of regulatory permits. Automatically, we'll have to go through an ENF, an environmental notification form under the MEPA process. And there's a potential, once we get through that process, that we'll have to go through a environmental impact report. And as one of the people testified, the majority of projects in AC-ECs have to go through the EIR. The ENF will delay the project about 30, about 60 to 90 days. But a environmental impact report could take a year and $100,000 or more and that would essentially kill this project. So what we do know is that to complete our contract with the Schweitzer Company, we already have a problem because we don't know whether or not we're going to be in or out of the AC-EC and we won't know until March 30th. So that already is putting a crimp into finalizing the contract. The final thing I want to say is that cities and towns all over the Commonwealth are trying to attract industry. Here we have an abandoned factory, adaptive reuse, high-tech industry, and that industry is highly regulated. Don't think for a moment that if it's not in the AC-EC, the plant will be able to locate there without any permits. There's going to be plenty of permits that we're going to need through the Zoning Board of Appeals, maybe through the Conservation Commission. So we are highly regulated and we will be able to, the public will be able to get a clear picture about what this is all about. Finally, this is the zoning map of Lennox. The purple area is the industrial zone. So we have an industrial zone in this location and this location. As I said, Lennox is 13,800 acres. The industrial zone is 125 acres. So less than 1% of Lennox is in the industrial area. If you put the entire industrial zone in the AC-EC, you know you're going to have problems with developing the industrial zone. That's why the city of Pittsfield wants to move their projects in the future out of the AC-EC. Now, the proponents will say, "Don't worry about it. It's going to be easy. It's never happened before." But I can guarantee you that the more levels of regulation, the more difficult it is to, to develop. So what we're asking is this very, very small modification of the boundaries. It's about 0.04% and it will not adversely affect the environmental considerations of the proponents. We just have a very short presentation for our engineer and then Michelle and then we'll be finished. Is that okay? Thank you.
I'll keep this very short. My name is Jeff Park. I'm senior ecologist at O'Reilly, Talbot and Okem. Where I serve as an ecological risk assessor, general ecologist, and I also dabble in biological mathematics and biostatistics. As Phil mentioned, I did a survey of the site. I looked at terrestrial receptors, birds. I did a wildlife inventory. I also looked at the river. I think one of the things that, just to bear in mind, is that everything that's been discussed this evening is referring to a mosaic. This landscape is comprised of patch types. A patch type that I examined is disturbed. It was industrial use for about 100 years. There was a former Centennial Mill located on the site that was demolished, sections of which you can actually find along the bank. The riparian buffer itself is virtually non-existent on the site. So one of the things that we're concerned about cold water fisheries is thermal enrichment, which is occurring on the site. You've got pavement, rain hits the pavement, it heats up and it's sort of discharged into the river via sheet flow. So there is a basis, at least an ecological basis for abstracting this small section from the AC-EC area while still maintaining the interest of the larger parcel. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Henderson and I'm an engineer with Interstate Biofuels. First and foremost, to reiterate what's already been said, Interstate believes that with minor adjustments, the AC-EC is very much so worthwhile. We absolutely have no issue with stewardship of the, of the river. We think it's a We think it's a beautiful area, and we would not want to harm that. We hope to build an environmentally friendly, non-polluting, state-of-the-art biodiesel production facility. This is a 100-year-old paper mill. There are lots of issues with the site itself. It is not clean. There are no endangered species there. There's, I mean, it's been disturbed for 100 years. As Jeff just mentioned, there's even a buried mill there that juts out into the river. Adaptive reuse of this site is consistent with the state's alternative fuel initiative. Our project would create jobs. It would provide a clean fuel. And it should be noted, it would do so without using, you keep hearing about how all of these alternative fuels are using food. Well, we wouldn't be doing that. And we also wouldn't be bringing in train loads of of waste fats, oils, or greases. That's not, this is remarkably clean, very expensive technology that we're talking about. And for those who are concerned about whether we're trying to skirt anything, we are very much so prepared to go through all of the standard permitting. But we cannot and quite frankly will not commit to having to go through an additional years' worth of permitting. And we know that there's that possibility. So indeed, unfortunately, in this case, the A C E C boundary does preclude economic development. Again, we are not opposed to, you know, protecting the Hoosatonic. We applaud the objectives of the E C of the A C E C proposal. But we have absolutely no interest in destroying our habitat, and we see absolutely no reason to be within the A C E C boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. We're coming to the end of this. Does anybody who has not spoken yet that does want to speak, please come down and make sure you get your name on the list. There was one gentleman came down. Is it Tim Gray? There's anybody else? I believe that's second to last. If there's anybody else who does wish to speak that neglected to sign up, please. Okay, just if you, we'll call on you when we're done with this as well.
My name, my name is Tim Gray. I'm director of the Hoosatonic River Initiative, past president of the Lee Land Trust. I am also a business owner in the town of Lee for 30 years, and my property is the last southern part in the A C E C. And I am 100% in support of the concept of the A C E C. I have spent 20 years of my life trying to get the PCBs cleaned up in and around Pittsfield and in the river. I will tell you one of the things, when EPA comes in and cleans the river, the most important word is restoration. What will they do after they take the PCBs out? Will they restore the river to state-of-the-art techniques so that it will be in the condition that it was in eventually and grow back to the river that we know it is now? I know that the A C E C will raise the bar on restoration. It will allow us to go to the EPA and say, hey, this is a special area. We need to do better. We need to restore it better. I I want to echo what's been said about the resources in this area. It's one of the most wonderful places on the river, from Long Island Sound all the way up to Pittsfield. You think you're canoeing through Montana when you're in this area. It's absolutely gorgeous. And I'll end up by saying about three days ago, being on the southern border of the A C E C, my back window in my house looks out at the river, and there's a big old dead elm, probably 150 feet high. And for the last three days, there's been a male bald eagle sitting on this tree about 30 inches high. And I look at this eagle as a sentinel on the edge of the A C E C telling us, hey, this is my spot. It needs protection. We're back. We're here to stay, and we would love to have this area protected. And the A C E C, one thing a gentleman said was that the A C E C will go on after the cleanup. That's the whole reason for the A C E C. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Ed Leahy. I live at 110 Mill Street. I'm 100 yards from the Hoosatonic River and 200 yards from Lenoxdale. I've been there all my life. And somebody mentioned the Centennial Mill. My grandfather ran the Centennial Mill, the Niagara Mill, and I forget the name of the third one all the way up. But anyway, the point of it is, listening to all of this and having been back in Lee since 75, the word exemption or exclusion jumps out at me. I've heard two of them tonight. One was by Mr. Mason. And word has gotten to me indirectly that the reason that lane construction may be concerned possibly about an exemption, getting an exemption, is that GE might be interested in dumping the PCBs in lane construction. And that's right in the middle of Lenoxdale. Now, you talk about the Niagara Mill and this biofuel plant. To my knowledge, they have no experience whatsoever in having built one. They have no idea what what is going to happen. What I have heard is that it basically, they work from garbage, and they bring garbage in on railroad trains. Whatever else they bring in, I don't know. I have heard that. I may be wrong. I accept that. The track record is not there. There is no track record. And where is it located? It's a little piece right in the heart of Lenoxdale. So when you look at exceptions, I would say to you with all respect, you took great pains to set up the area. You looked at it very carefully to see how it should be protected and what area should be protected, and I think you should stick to it. Thank you.
Claire Leahy?
Hello, I'm Claire Leahy. I live right there at the corner of Washington Mountain Road, which is Washington Mountain Brook, one of the tributaries of territories of the Hoosatonic River, right at the intersection of the Hoosatonic River and Washington Mountain Brook. As my husband just said, that land has, we have over three and a half acres of agricultural residential land there, which has been in the family for over 100 years. We look out the window over at that buried mill that was a Niagara mill, and we see all kinds of wildlife. We see great blue heron going up the river there. But also behind us is the mountain, October Mountain, and I just want to speak to you about my love of that mountain. That mountain, I rode my horse on for 15 years, and it is just the most gorgeous place. Bernard Drew spoke about the history. As you go around that mountain, there's old, old cellar holes that were there from when the Italians came to settle the area. They didn't want to be down in the valley. They settled up on the mountain, and there's still those cellar holes. And there's still an old, the remnants of an old town, which was called Greenwich, and the cemetery is still up there. And that's a part of a wetlands area that has a trail through it that's been preserved. Now, we heard somebody speak about maintaining the trails because of the ATVs, such a great job they do maintaining the trails. Unfortunately, I could not ride my horse on those trails because they were so rock-strewn, so eroded from the ATVs or using those mountain trails. And to this day, when I try to hike there, snowshoe, they are eroded. All the steep hills are ridden on by those ATVs from mountain climbing, and there's erosion going down into the river, right on the side of the river, those trails up above Woods Pond. And also, up as you go hiking, my daughter and I were up there hiking, and we came upon two ATVs that were stuck in the mud of a wetland because they were trying to get around a wetland. Every single little spring you come along on that mountain, it's all eroded from ATVs because it's the only mountain. That mountain has been the place for the ATVs for the past 30 years, and they're all there. I don't know if it's worth the economic money, the money that comes in from those riders, but our mountain is being destroyed because it is the only designation. They come here from New York and Connecticut, and that mountain is being destroyed. I want to see it preserved and brought back to what it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Gail Tardif Razor. I work for Mass Audubon. For the past 17 years, I've been working with the children of Berkshire County. This year is one of many years that we've been working with kids on the Hoosatonic River. Every year, for the past 12 years, we've taken between 500 and 1,000 kids out canoeing from the dairy area, from the Decker launch site, and they do a canoe trip. We have an expanded program this year. We work with the Hoosatonic Valley Association, and we are educating thousands of children in Berkshire County about the Hoosatonic. I urge all of you to support the A C E C because we need that area there for them when they grow up. I haven't heard much talking about the kids today, but they own that river. It's not ours. It's theirs. Thank you.
Okay, Ann, Ann John?
Thank you for letting me in the last minute. I didn't know I was going to say anything till about 60 seconds ago, and then I was inspired. I am an artist, and I'm also the executive director of a nonprofit art and educational organization here in the Berkshires. We travel around to various towns. And I think I can speak for many artists for many hundreds of years, many thousands of artists who have been inspired by the river and the Berkshires and the surrounding river, the river surroundings. And specifically, I can say that in 2004, our organization orchestrated an exhibition of large-scale outdoor sculpture, and the theme was the Hoosatonic River. We attracted more than 30 artists from all over the country who were inspired by the river, its beauty, its history, and its problems, and created specific sculptures that answered those inspirations. It drew a lot of people. It focused their attention on the river. I myself knew, I never knew the river as well as I did when I had to tow sculptures up the river. It was very hard. It's a very strong river, and I think and I hope that it will survive. We used two sites of the river, and it was very enlightening to me how different it can be. We had one site for the sculptures in Hoosatonic, where you might know the Berkshire Mountain Bakery. And there, the river was so gentle and so slow that we actually could invite more than 100 high school students to do a workshop there. And they did that also inspired by the river, and to them, it was also a new vision. We constructed biodegradable, biodegradable sculptures on the edge of the river, and we even sent them down the river. It was a unique experience that they will never forget, and it was one of our, I think, best exhibitions because it had a theme that went beyond, I shouldn't say only art, but it combined so many different things. In fact, that year, the Hoosatonic River theme was not only our theme, but it was a collaboration between about 30 organizations, both art and environmental. And it was just a wonderful feeling to come together with everybody else and have that one focus. So I think on behalf of thousands of artists and many, many thousands of people who came to see the art and who over the years have seen the Hoosatonic-inspired artwork, we want to see it better than it is, and we hope it will be, and we will support any tool that will make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Specter?
Just very briefly, I want to speak on behalf of the Berkshire Competitive Paddlers. We are the group of people who are on the river a minimum of 180 days a year. We know every inch of that river. We paddle it every single day from spring until fall. So we probably know the river and the land, the bottom of the river, better than anybody in this room or who was here. The one thing that has concerned me and why I'm and why we are strongly in favor of the A C E C is because we have seen what's happened to the river downriver from what the work has been done in Pittsfield. And the one thing that we have noticed, and I've been paddling this river, like I said, for about 180 days a year for the last 20 years, this is the first year in low water when you get toward the end of spring. The river, a little bit upstream toward Pittsfield, is non-navigatable at this, at that time because of the amount of silt that has accumulated. That was never there before. You did have, you had obviously low water, but you had channels going through. Now there's sandbanks in the middle of the river and in places where there never were before, and you actually can't paddle there anymore. So it's our fear that if you don't have this extra layer of protection, that there's a lot of things about this river that are not going to be taken care of, and we're going to lose it for the future. It's going to change course in an unnatural way, and we would like to see that happen, not happen. The other thing that concerns me is I've been to a lot of the meetings about the GE Plan for dredging the river and what they would do to the riverbanks and to the acreage that abuts the river directly. It's also our concern, most of the competitive paddlers are over the age of 40 years old, and it's probably, we would not see restoration of the river within our lifetime and within our active lifetime, and that's a big concern for us also. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has not had a chance to speak that would like an opportunity to? At this point, I would like to ask Eleanor, as the representative, yeah, as the representative of the nominator, she's asked if she can make some final closing comments, and then I'll have a couple of final pieces of business at the end to take care of. But Eleanor? Was there one extra person? Do you want to, please?
My name is John Pilastry. I'm the president of Lee Sportsman's Club in Lee, Mass. And I just wanted to give our perspective on the A C E C. Obviously, we're outdoorsmen. We love to fish, hunt. And the area that's been discussed is very dear to our hearts. Most people probably don't recognize the fishery, the fish that are in the river. And everything from beautiful trout to some of the biggest pike in the state. A lot of fellas out there ice fishing now every Saturday and Sunday. And of course, the uplands, you know, we team up with Lenox Sportsman's Club on many occasions to clean the mountains and to keep it as pristine as possible because it's such a beautiful, beautiful area. So on behalf of the Lee Sportsman's Club, I would say we support the A C E C and would like to keep, keep it as beautiful as possible and keep it open to all endeavors. And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. May I just ask you to sign your name in for the record? If there's no one else, I would like to have, ask Eleanor if she wants to make a final comment as representative of the nominators of the A C E C.
Thanks, everybody, for staying so long. It's been fascinating listening to all the comments. The A C E C program has been in existence since 1975. It's a 34-year-old program. 74 communities in Massachusetts have A C E Cs. This is a program that has been around a long time, and towns and cities have thrived with having A C E Cs. If they didn't have economic development within the boundaries of A C E Cs, the program would have died long ago. We looked at nine communities, both Green Berkshires, and we also, as you heard earlier, hired Bryony Angus at Ty and Bond. And what we found overwhelmingly was that communities that had multiple A C E Cs supported them and continue to support them strongly. So for example, Easton has two A C E Cs, covers 56% of the town. They have wastewater treatment plants in there. They have mining within there. They have industrial zones. They have commercial zones. The head of the Public Works of Easton left a message for me, and he said he initially had concerns about the A C E C, but now he supports it wholeheartedly. He said it has not caused them any problems. The city of, the town of Groton, 88% of the town is covered by three A C E Cs. They have commercial districts, industrial districts, mining, wastewater treatment, sewage disposal, all within the A C E Cs. They support it. They think it's a great program. The city of Taunton, larger than Pittsfield, 43% of the city is covered with A C E Cs. They have three A C E Cs. The most recent was nominated in 2008. The mayor himself was a nominator on that ACEC. Throughout Massachusetts, we have regional planning agencies that are in support of ACECs, town boards, city officials. It's a program with a long history of popularity. It does not impede economic development, and you also heard what Bryony said with her research. It simply does not impede economic development. When we spoke to economic development people, community development people in those towns, they all said it has not been a problem, and in fact, they raised some important points about why it's been a success for them because it's helped them get more state funding. So we have a lot of research on our website. We're going to be posting Bryony's information. We'll be submitting information to the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. We've had maps drawn up as well of those communities. We'll post all of that on our website. We believe this is a good program. It's a well-tried program, and we think it will be a success in the Berkshires. And thanks very much for coming out tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you all very much. I'd just like to remind everybody that written testimony can be submitted for an additional 10 days through February 9th. The address is on the public notice and on your agenda here. If you don't have it, Liz or Beth, I can give that to you. Comments to the secretary, whose decision will be made within 60 days by the end of March. On a personal note, I'd like to thank all of you. Many of you thanked me for coming out here. I think your thanks are misplaced. Your thanks belong with your neighbors, your colleagues, your friends here who've made, taken their time out to come here this evening and offer their opinion, to put the work into preparing this, to talk with all of you to get to where you are at this stage. On behalf of the secretary, we appreciate all the work that has gone into it. We appreciate everybody coming out here for a late evening. It's invaluable for us to hear this kind of commentary. We look forward to seeing the, the rest of the written comments, and thank you all very much. If anybody else would like to speak, we're done. Thank you all very much.